I don't know what that is.
Just give me this.
What do I do? Oh, wait a minute.
I know we shut the machine off, so whatever. Okay.
I'm gonna get up here so I can.
Come on.
Got an echo in here.
Come on.
Usually everybody wants to sit back there where all the food is, but I'm.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Okay, so a brief overview of what your, we know what you kinda do, but what your goals are here and.
Okay, well, essentially, um, most of my budget is what it is. Most of the things that have any discretion, the town doesn't pay for. Okay, senior club pays for most of the activities, most of the supplies that I need and things like that. So let me just start at the top and I'll work my way down. Okay, repairs and maintenance is on the vehicles. Okay, your medical car and a senior bus, okay? Last year, we didn't use a whole lot of it because both vehicles were new. Okay, and even on the med car, for example, the first oil change was free, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have seventeen thousand miles on the med car and ten on the bus, okay? So some of that was, it's gonna start getting to be used, okay? So I did reduce it, reduce it a little bit in anticipation.
Okay.
You know, there will be, at least for the med car this year, there'll be tires. There's, uh, the buses going in a week after next for oil change and stuff like that, okay? So that's, that's what you got there, okay? Building maintenance is one of the, it's the biggest expense and it's one of the few things there that, that we do that the town actually pays for, okay? It's things like the lights and the heat, uh, it's paid, the, the maintenance of the furnace and the air conditioning, the water testing, the emergency lights get, uh, come, they come in a couple times a year and check all that stuff. They check the alarm system, all that, all that kinda stuff, okay? And if I come in in the morning and the alarm is going off and it shouldn't be, somebody has to come in and work on it, that's where all that stuff gets paid for, okay? Also, um, the exercise room has, um, half a dozen pieces of equipment in there. Company comes in every April and goes through the, the equipment to make sure everything is good and, and safe still. And, um, you know, so those kinda things get paid out of that line.
Is that your new refrigerator or freezer come out of that line or?
No.
That's in capital.
Actually, um, the, the new freezer that we had to buy in December, actually didn't get paid for with tax dollars. What happened was.
Thank you, told me that, wow.
It came out of, when the building was being built, people made donations to furnish the building. Okay, and when the building got furnished, there was still money in the fund. And we've been holding onto it and it's been used sporadically as things came up. And there was still enough money in there to buy the freezer, which was just under three thousand dollars.
Wow.
There's still a couple thousand dollars left in that fund, okay?
But if something else, like another freezer or something else went, then it would come out.
That's where it would come, okay? Um, you know, so, um, but if, um, also, um, things like mulch that we buy in the spring, um, if, um, well, I noticed last night when I came back, last night, one of the parking lot lights are, okay? So those kinda things all come out of that point.
Yep.
Okay? All right, um, communications is, um.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Right.
There used to be money in there for that and since I took over, I.
Trimmed it out?
Scratched it, okay? To be perfectly honest, um, I don't know why it was there to start with. It wasn't being used and, um, so I stopped it, okay? Postage and envelopes is pretty minimal and, um, cell phone, cellphone, okay? I think you saw a minor increase in that this year, uh, just because that's what the bill is.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, cable television, okay? Saw a little increase there. That, that was, um, again, that's what the bill is. And we're trying to make an improvement there with our, bring, bring in some more capability. We're in the process now of putting in a sound system in the big room, and which the senior club is paying for. And once that's completed, I wanna be able to, uh, set up on the big screen so people can watch, like UConn girls' basketball games and things like that there. So in order to be able to do that, there's, there's, um.
Needed a better sound system.
Well, we needed, um, better, uh, cable program. Okay, to get, to get the games.
Oh, yeah, that's right, because that's, especially the women, they're, they went to that.
Right.
Heritage down there in New York.
And the cable that we have at the center now, I think there's only seven or eight channels, okay? So that's what that is.
Okay.
Okay? Travel reimbursement, um, historically, there, there's been money in that line for that. I don't use it. I drive and I, I don't put in for it, okay? I get whatever it is, forty-five cents or fifty cents a mile or whatever it is, it's not gonna make or break me. I do go to meetings in Hartford and different places, but, um.
So that's for just your travel reimbursement?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Supplies, uh, you will see a little bit of difference there this year. Okay? Just because, um, cost has gone up, um, most of our supplies, um, the senior club pays for. But biggest part of our supply line there is really, um, copy paper that we use for the newsletter. Okay, it's a bigger paper, it's expensive and, um, that's the biggest part of it. I had to buy a pencil sharpener and things like that. Most everything else, okay? And, um.
Right, I know.
This year I bought two easels because I was borrowing them from Jim and.
Well, his were pretty crappy.
They were pretty bad. And so, um.
Were they electric pencil sharpeners?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I know, the luxury.
And I will tell you, they, you know why they, why I had to have that? For the adult coloring program. Okay? Okay, electricity and bottled gas.
Well, that went up because of the sharpeners, I can tell.
Okay, essentially, um, the numbers that we have there really look at year-to-use, um, and stuff like that. It is what it is. Bottled gas actually is less than what it was when, when I first started working there. I think we paying less now than we were before, okay? We changed over to Dutch a few years ago and, and it's been less every year. The electricity, um, with the solar panels on the roof, if you look back at the history far enough, it used to be about ten thousand a year, now it's a little more than five.
Wow.
Fantastic.
Okay. Dues and fees, uh, I put more money in there this year because, um, they're putting a new regulation in effect through the state health department and, um, Patty is gonna have to get certified with a food service license. Currently it's just me, but they're passing new regulations, we're both gonna have to have it. And so that'll cover the cost of that. Special programs, okay? A lot of that is, um, when we recognize our volunteers, okay? We do a volunteer reception each year and all the volunteers get something, okay? They, everybody gets the same thing, but that's where the bulk of that money comes from. I mean, that takes up the, last year, I think it, I think eight hundred and twenty dollars or something like that. Uh, one year we gave everybody a canvas, carry bag that said Eastham Senior Center on it. Last year they got a travel, um, welcome, okay? But, uh, if you compare our programs to the centers around us in other towns, um, we don't really charge for anything, it's because most everything is done by volunteers. Okay, and, um, so there, we only have two, two of us working there. We could never do the programs that we have without the volunteers. And it's important to, um, recognize them, so we do something every April. We, so we do the reception and we'll have punch and cake and that kinda thing. And, and I try to say a few words about everybody and, um, that's what that is, um.
And the reason it hasn't happened yet, which is why there's been, been costs.
We do it in April, okay? And you're gonna look at some of these things, uh, especially in the building maintenance, okay? A lot of the annual things that we do every year happen in the spring.
Okay.
That's why a lot of that money hasn't been spent yet, okay? They come in and that's when they test the alarm systems and the emergency lights. Somebody comes in and inspects the ANZEL system and, and all those kinds of things. And most of that gets done, um, second half of the year, okay? We did just have the, um, septic pumped and, um, the grease trap, okay? But, um.
Yeah, I remember signing that.
Yeah. But, uh, a lot of the other things, you know, uh, the annual things, they happen in the, in the second half of the year.
Okay.
Okay, uh, obviously, when you look at the year-to-date from bottled gas.
Right.
That, uh, it's probably, if you're looking at it to first half of the year, it's not gonna be much because it wasn't heating season. We heat with bottled gas and, uh, so it's gonna, you know, second half. Second half of the year is gonna get used mostly. We have, um, um, about a year ago, we put in new thermostats, so, um, I think that will, will help us with some savings. Because, um, I can take and, I can be home and like on Sunday night, somebody comes in there for yoga. So on Sunday afternoon, I crank it up a little bit. Before I was either having to make a special trip down there or leave it up. If I knew I wasn't gonna be around, I left it up.
Now are you doing hot yoga?
I don't know what hot yoga is.
Can you make the room like a hundred and twenty degrees?
Hundred and ten, yes, they've done hot yoga, yeah.
Apparently not.
Okay, um, and gasoline and diesel is the, is one of two vehicles. I think, um, we're probably gonna use more this year than we did last year just because, um, more trips.
Well, it's a good thing.
Okay, uh, the medical car, uh, we've got a, about a year ago, we started with a new driver and, um, working out better, um, and doing, he's able to do more trips. We get, that, that really gets used a lot.
Can you explain how the medical car works?
Sure.
So people call, sorry?
They call to the senior center and check and see when, if it's available on a certain day.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, if it's available, we put them down, we find out where they're going. Okay, in that car, we'll pick them up at their house, bring them to the appointment, wait for them, and then bring them home. Okay, there's a five dollar fee.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that five dollars that they pay goes into a special fund, transportation fund, senior transportation fund. That money stays there until we have to buy another vehicle. That's how, so a year, a little more than a year ago, we bought the car that we're talking about. That's how it got paid for.
Wonderful.
Okay?
And the, the medical appointment, is there a radius that it has to be within or?
No.
Yeah, okay.
We take, we have some people that have a situation where they need to go to Yale.
Yeah.
We have some that had to go to UConn in Farmington, okay? Just because, um, their situation.
Right, yeah.
But most of them are, um, Middletown, Cromwell, Glassonbury. A lot of the doctors from Hartford Hospital have offices in Glassonbury now. And, uh, so that's pretty popular. Just recently, uh, we had a, every three months, we have a regional meeting with the senior center directors from, from the area and actually that subject came up and, um, question went around as to what you do. I mean, uh, they were taking, some people were saying, you know, maybe they were thinking of putting a limit on it, fifteen miles. And I said, well, if we put a fifteen mile limit, then we wouldn't get anybody anywhere.
Get them halfway through.
Get out of town.
I mean, there's only one doctor in town, that'd be the only one that would be able to go to them, you know? But, um, the, basically, the people who use it are the people who don't have any other way.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not criticizing the programs, I just wanna understand it.
You know.
I think it's wonderful.
You know, uh, and we do limit how many times they can use it in a month so that they're not taking away from somebody else. Okay, but, um.
Are you full to capacity, are you scheduled right out on that car?
Most months, there are very few vacancies, okay? Next week, I do have two days that aren't being used, but that's unusual.
Okay.
Okay, um, and usually.
Good to know.
January, February is a little bit slower, okay? But, I mean, I've got people that have already made appointments for April and May.
Yeah.
But, um, some of them, um, uh, they come from all over town, but, you know, even things like going up or calling out with people, they won't, they won't let you drive home.
Right.
You know, and, you know, we've got one woman who had a stroke, can't see good anymore. Can't so she can't drive, that's your only transportation for the doctor, you know?
How lucky we can do that.
You know, um, you know, I'm with people who live in Middletown, there's some better public transportation. And, and they're close to the hospital and the doctors where we're not.
Right, yeah.
Probably the most popular spot that they go to is the outpatient facility on Sabre Row.
Right. So it sounds like you are very fortunate with a lot of your volunteers and donations.
Yep, and I've got something to give you to talk about that.
Okay, could you tell us a little more about your senior club?
Our senior club consists of anybody who wants to join that is fifty or older, okay? And essentially, they are people who are active in the senior center. And so, um, they will take and participate in programs and, and they meet once a month. And, um, we will talk about, should we do a St. Patrick's Day party or should we do this or that? And make those kinda decisions, um, we will, um, and, um, some, when we talk about doing some of that kinda stuff, um, some of them will have, uh, walk out of the meeting with some responsibilities, you know? Set up or clean up or making desserts or something like that. And, um, you know, if, um.
And there's a fee that goes along with some of the activities, no? So how does it generate any revenue?
The only thing that there's a fee for is, uh, once, twice in a month, we have Candy Nero comes in and there's Reiki. We have a massage therapist that comes in and does massage therapy. They pay for that, okay? Most everything else is, is free, except for they do pay for bus rides and that kinda thing. And if they go on a lunch trip, they pay for their lunch and that kinda stuff. And they pay for lunch when they come in and eat, okay? But they make money, uh, you know, for example, at the holiday craft fair in, in first Saturday in December.
Okay.
Okay, made thirty-four hundred dollars, okay? They have, um, big tag sale in the summer, they do things like that, okay? And that's how they make money, okay? We're in the process now, um, Mark Niddles has already placed an order and, um, they're gonna put in that sound system in the big room. Senior Center is paying for it, it comes with thirty-nine hundred and forty-one dollars.
Senior Club's paying for it.
Senior Club is paying for it.
Wow, good.
So it's just under four thousand dollars, okay? So that, okay, um, little, about a year and a half ago, we needed a bigger storage shed, okay? It was, um, a little more than six thousand dollars the senior club paid for, okay? And the storage shed that was there was transported over to the high school and the, um, theater, theater department is, drama club is using it for storage.
Okay.
Okay, so it worked out, it helped out both things, okay? So things like that, okay?
Fred, can I ask you a question about, so I think two years back, we were worried about senior meals?
Yes.
And I don't see that reflected anywhere here.
Well, senior meals doesn't come out of the budget.
Okay, so, but I know we, you were supplementing it.
What happens is, um, because of, um, budget constraints a couple years ago, there was reduction in, it used to be five days a week was supplied through the state program.
Right.
Okay? And they had budget troubles and so they started putting a cap on our meal program. And what was happening was we were having to tell people they couldn't come because we'd already reached a cap.
Right, yeah.
The cap was pretty low, okay? So I reduced it to three days a week and so now we don't have a cap anymore, under three days a week from the state. Okay, and I get two days a week from Moody's Barbecue, okay? And what happens is people make donations for senior meals, okay? And that money goes into a separate fund, okay? And obviously, the, the lunch that I get from Moody's Barbecue is not government subsidized like the state lunches. So it costs more than what the people pay. We make up the difference from, the people come in and they pay three dollars, okay? The difference for that comes from the senior meal fund. Okay, for example, yesterday, I came in and gave in two hundred dollars worth of donations to senior meals. And that, that money would be put into that fund.
And that's just residents in the area that are giving donations to that fund?
Residents, um, sometimes some businesses have donated.
Okay.
The Community Alliance Club made a big donation, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's how we pay for it, okay? And we have, um, so on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the meal comes from Moody's Barbecue. And obviously, um, it's, um, like with the state meal, we get desserts. With that meal, we don't, okay? So we have, um, a friendly lady that makes us dessert every Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we used to have one that did it on Tuesdays too, but she got tired of it.
Yeah, I was like, I feel like I've dropped off desserts a few times.
Yes.
Yeah, that, kinda the community supplemented.
So we've, that's how we've been able to keep it going.
Yeah.
Some of the other towns have done, have gone from five days to three days a week, but they don't serve meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays to anybody, okay? But it's working good for us. Grismo used to do the meal.
Right.
And now we're getting it from Moody's Barbecue.
And that fund, that fund feels, you're not in, you're, when you need, there's people who are willing to step up and fill in that fund?
When we start getting low, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I will start pushing for and again advertising.
Okay.
We do have some people who regularly, uh, every month, come in and give me a check, okay? And, uh, so that's how we're able to keep it going.
Yeah.
A couple years ago, uh, at Jag Bark and Wrestling Catch and a few places like that, they had those round things that you could. Okay, we collected quite a bit of money doing that. And so between that and continual donations, um, Community Alliance gave a thousand dollars this year, this past year, you know?
And how many participants do you have, how many?
At, at lunch?
Yeah.
It varies, um, depending on what's going on that day and, and what the menu is. But we will have, uh, tomorrow I get eighteen, okay?
Is that an, is that a good average?
That's about the average, okay? But some days, they'll be thirty-five, okay?
Holiday meals or something?
St. Patrick's Day, when we do St. Patrick's Day lunch, I'll have seventy-five, okay?
Now what about, um, with the barbecue, are you finding that the residents enjoy coming for that? Are you finding an increase those days or a decrease?
Probably getting more because actually the food is better than it is from the state.
Okay, okay.
To, to give you an example though, this year, we've collected just shy of forty-two hundred dollars in donations and expenses year-to-date. Been thirty-six hundred. And last year, you collected seventy-two hundred in donations and the expenses were forty-nine hundred.
Wait, sorry, can you?
Really nice. So this year, we've had, in round numbers, forty-two hundred in donations, I mean, yeah, hang on a second.
That's year-to-date?
Yeah, year-to-date, we've had forty-two hundred in donations and thirty-six hundred in expenses. And last year, we had seventy-two hundred in donations and forty-nine hundred in expenses.
So, you know.
Okay.
And quite honestly, our expenses are probably gonna be a little bit higher this year. Cause our costs are a little bit higher.
Yep.
Okay, but, um, and some more people, okay?
Right.
You know, without, without the donations, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
And, um, but, you know, I have some people, I have one lady that gives us, comes in and gives us two hundred dollars a month. Another one that gives us a hundred dollars a month. We have some people that give us fifty dollars, okay? You have some that might give us twenty dollars, you know?
And if people wanna donate that, they write a check to the senior center and then write senior meal fund in the memo.
Towneby's Town.
Towneby's Town, and then it's down in the memo section, you write senior meals. Okay? And it goes into a fund where that's the only thing it's used for, okay? And, um, you know, we, um, you know, so, we had, um, in, in December, we had, uh, we call it the holiday lunch, I don't call it Christmas lunch.
Yeah.
Okay, and we had the New Year's celebration and so, you know, that was how we paid for some of it, okay? And, um, but, um, this year, uh, just to give you an update, um, the money for that program in the state for our region, it was actually reduced a little bit. And so, some of the towns who are doing five days a week are probably gonna get reduced to three. And Meals on Wheels has had some reduction. You used to be able to sign up for either a single meal, which was a hot meal that you'd get at lunchtime. Or you could sign up for a double meal, which would mean that when you got your meal, you also got a cold sandwich and a milk and a piece of fruit or something that you could eat at dinnertime. And you also had the option of signing up for weekend meals. If you signed up for the weekend meal, you would get a frozen meal that needed to go in the microwave. You would get one on Thursday for Saturday and you would get one on Friday for Sunday because we don't deliver on the weekend.
Okay.
Okay? Well, the weekend option has gone away for new clients and so has the double meal option. So, um, basically, the, um.
Which was funded by the state as well?
Well, it comes from the federal government to the state, okay? So eighty, eighty percent of it was federal and twenty was state. Okay, so whatever the federal government gives us, the state gives you twenty, okay? And, um, so in other words, and then you have to be a homebound person to qualify for Meals on Wheels. And, um, so I guess now they don't want, they don't wanna have, eat on Saturday and Sunday, okay? Last summer sometime, there was a news conference, um, the federal, the, the, the. um, the federal, the, the White House Budget Director Mnuchin was giving a talk at a news conference. And talking about making reductions to, um, senior meals, okay? He actually said on TV, I was watching it, and I didn't throw anything at the TV, was.
You'd already had to replace him in a TV trade.
Said that, we have no proof that anybody benefits from, from Meals on Wheels. And, um, you know.
Ridiculous. So, our, our volunteers, our, so it's senior center volunteers that do the delivery of Meals on Wheels, right?
But the meals get delivered to us from Harvard.
Yeah, and so, is there, are you hearing from anyone that they're going hungry over the weekends or like?
What's happening is, um, the Community Alliance and, um, their Congregational Church
Yeah.
are taking up collections and giving them to me, and, and we are distributing them to Meals on Wheels people.
Okay.
Okay, so this week, for example, on either tomorrow or Friday, some of them are gonna get some canned soup and stuff like that. Okay? Um, so it's been, been happening pretty regular, okay, that they are giving, giving me stuff. And, uh, so we've been able to, um, supplement that way.
And how many, do you know how many, um, people need the double meal option or the weekend option and aren't being served?
Um, well, so basically, the people that were getting it are still getting it.
Are still getting it, yeah.
Okay, I just put on a new person this week.
Yeah.
And, um, so if she wanted the double meal or the weekend meal, she wouldn't have been able to get it.
Right.
That's true, but she didn't need it.
Okay.
So it hasn't affected anybody yet.
Okay.
But let's just say, Carleen wanted to sign up for Meals on Wheels and she signed up for it. If she wanted the weekend meals, I wouldn't be able to give her to her.
Right, and, but you would track that, it was something she requested and then try to fill that through a donation.
But, um, the, the current people that were on it already, it didn't get taken away. It's just affecting new clients.
Okay.
Okay.
So the other question that I have too, Brad, is that you talked about, um, your equipment, like your exercise equipment?
Yeah.
And, and what did you say, a five year? What, what did you say about renewing, re?
I didn't say anything.
Swapping out, is there, do you have a plan on replacement on that, on that equipment?
Thank you.
I think the senior club paid for it last time.
Senior club paid for it, so, um, and so let's just say, for example, I came in tomorrow morning and the treadmill was dead, and the guy came in and looked at it and says, it's done for.
Yeah.
Senior club paid for it.
Senior club paid, so that senior club is really amazing.
Without the senior club.
Couldn't exist.
Our budget would be much, much bigger.
Right.
Okay, if you look at the paper I just passed out for you, these are basic, standard things that the town does not have to pay for, because the senior club pays for it, or donations come in, um, you know, we go.
For things.
Okay, and so these are things that the town never pays for. Some of them were on the list last year because it's continual.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
Um, but, you know, coffee and tea, I mean, we go through a ton of coffee there, and, um, I got, uh, more coffee than seven eleven has, okay? Um, copy paper, regular copy paper like this, I have not bought through the town in five years. Okay, it gets, yesterday I had two cases donated, okay? Um, okay, the printer and, and, um, for the computer room.
Not getting any of that.
That the, um, seniors use, okay, senior club that takes care of that. Okay, same thing for the cartridges for the, uh, computer room. Um, we just ordered
Those are expensive.
Ink cartridges yesterday for a hundred and twenty nine dollars, okay, senior club pays for it. Uh, we put, bought a new projector, it's gonna go, it's gonna be part of that sound system, okay? Patio furniture, um, actually, somebody stole the patio furniture a couple of years ago, and, um, so I bought stuff at Tractor Supply that would be really hard to pick up and move.
Yeah.
But, um, kitchen supplies, uh, okay, uh, you know, senior club does this. Uh, coffee pots or, I came in, went in tomorrow morning and, uh, one of the coffee pots didn't wanna work anymore, you know, that kind of thing, utensils, dishes, okay? Miscellaneous food supplies, uh, miscellaneous food items. Kleenex, household paper towels, I mean, I, I put it in the newsletter on the wishlist. And then next thing you know, we've got tons of paper towels, okay? Uh, we have entertainment and at the holiday dinners, okay, senior club pays for it. You know, we bring in a, um, three-piece band or whatever, okay? Program supplies, um, you know, for example, arts and crafts, we have that once a month and and, uh, the supplies, Candy Nero, she does the program for us, and we buy supplies every month. Club pays for it. Uh, we bought shelving for the shed, we bought the storage shed, um, needed more folding tables. We bought, um, pu- pu- portable tents for, that we use for the tag sale and stuff. Had to buy a new Christmas tree, um, miscellaneous cleaning supplies that we use, not the cleaning guy, but stuff that we use, okay? Um, you know, typical things, um, decorations and batteries for the things that we have there, outdoor plants, potting soil. Um, all the, all the plants that you see in the outside during, during the summertime, those are all donated, okay? Or the club paid for them, one of the two, okay? We just bought a new storage cabinet, uh, because we didn't have room. One of the things that happened when the building was being built, we had to cut back on things in the, in the, um, building and make, actually, the building got made a little bit smaller, so the grant would pay for the whole building and stor- storage area was one of the things that got cut. Um, the sound system I talked about a little while ago, um, that's, that's going in, the club is paying for that, okay? Um, in their community room, all the blinds had to be replaced this past year, the senior club paid for them.
Amazing.
Cool.
Do you wanna look at capital?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, Brad, the, uh, senior club is successful because you are doing a great job with this, and you are saving the town tremendous amount of money.
Well, thank you, but it's a team effort, okay? Um, people there are wonderful, the townspeople, uh, it's hard to believe how generous everybody is. And, um, they enjoy coming there, and I think that's why they're so generous, um, I mean, at the receptionist desk, there's a candy dish that we try to keep full so that people can, and, uh, and all that candy comes from donations, people bring it in, and every once in a while I gotta say, don't bring in any more candy for a while. Cause we can't, we don't have any place to put it, you know?
Nice.
And, uh, but people are very generous, and the townspeople are, are, um, really.
Crucious, yeah.
I mean, um, a couple of weeks ago, I had two people from the commissioner and agent from Hattam come in and see me and ask if, um, I could meet with them sometime and explain to them how we can do things, cause they can't do.
So, so again, a lot of it is your doing.
So let's look at the, the capital improvement here, cause we're starting to get a little behind schedule, okay?
Um.
There's no.
Age fifteen, and, uh, the only thing I question is, wouldn't it be, so the AC units? Are those, um, mini splits, is that what they are? The, uh, Mitsubishi style or?
No, no.
These are window units?
No, 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 big units, but they're not Mitsubishi.
Okay, okay.
We got big, big units out, two, four of them in back of the building.
Oh, okay, all right, so, so they're, okay, so you, cause that's a hot air system there?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, so, would it make sense to do them both at the same time? Or if they're separate units, I guess it wouldn't make that much difference.
They're, they're separate units, the only reason I separated them was so there wouldn't be so much expense at one time, okay? Um, I started putting them in the capital budget last year.
Yeah.
I talked with, um, Dutch who maintains them. And, um, that's about when he said we needed to be, they were at least, and probably be running to the end of their lifetime, okay? Um, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem doing all four of them at the same time, okay? So, um, no, that's a good question, but, um, that's the only reason I separated them was, um, trying to keep the cost down.
Okay.
Um, but that, that is, they're, obviously, they, they're all the same age, they're probably gonna run the hell out the same time.
Right, yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Um, but, no, it's four big units in the back of the building.
Okay.
And.
I just couldn't remember what was there.
Yeah, and, um, the, um, hey, you look at the thing is, we talked about the medical car and the bus. Both of those get paid, uh, the bus we buy through a grant.
Yes.
And we pay twenty percent, and our twenty percent comes out of the senior transportation fund that we collect the five dollars from.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, kitchen appliances, um, we have a little bit of money left in that fund, but, um, we put money in there, um, we've replaced the stove and the freezer already, so, um, but refrigeration and the dishwasher are.
The next things.
Oh, the next things, and, um, that's just a best guess. We could go in tomorrow and, and we could die, or, or, but, that's just a best guess, okay? Any questions on any of that?
No, nothing.
Nope.
Everything.
I'm glad you got the concept of thinking in the future.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you, Brad.
We, we tried, um, we, um, probably somewhere after two thousand thirty one.
You won't care?
I'll be a distant memory with most of the people, but, um, the solar system will probably have to, you know, probably have its lifetime, but there'll probably be some kind of program out there for it at that time.
Exactly.
But that has been a big savings.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Purchase or lease, or how does that work?
That was a program that happened for nonprofits and municipalities.
Yeah, I think.
Didn't cost the town anything.
My dad worked. My, my dad worked a lot on that, yeah.
Yeah.
We were fifteen years.
Um, Pete was involved in that when he was on the board.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's how, um, the historic society got it too.
So, um, one last question is that, um, so that was per- paid for and town owns it?
Okay, but, uh.
It was a lease that, that after, after a certain amount of years.
Okay, the lease, okay, okay. So, I mean, so actually, at the end of the lease, it becomes the option where the town can buy it, and then they can just keep running it at that point if they want, correct?
Yeah, if it's running efficiently or.
Most of them don't drop off that much, and they actually, it's typically is a fifteen year lease, you remember what it was, Linda?
I think it was fifteen.
Yeah, and then, uh, they're, they usually have at least a twenty year guarantee on them, so, a warranty on them.
You know, and, you know, whoever's making decisions at, at that point in time, if you find it's not, not doing the job, there's programs out there, so.
Okay, cool. Any other questions?
No, Brad, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Page two, page nine starts collector of revenue.
You're early, Denise. Okay, so, good, you don't want any more money. All right, why don't you tell us what's cooking? Any goals, is that a different? Oh, certified, yep, got those, but, uh, for the, tell us a little bit about your budget. If you want.
Not much, not much has changed. I did put in for the CCMO, which I started today.
Oh, did you?
First class was really good, we should do one here, it's cus- it was customer service.
Linda and I have gone to that, it's very good.
It was very good.
Was it the gal from, um?
Carrie.
Carrie, yeah, she's very good.
Yes.
Where was that given?
Berlin. So my goal is to have it done by October thirtieth or thirty first. There's a cutoff for this one.
That's awesome.
Yeah, there's not much change there.
But we can bring up uh, is, oh, I don't. Taxes, and don't look at the number at the top, that's what everybody funneled in for tax increase, so I'm gonna hide that. For interest and penalties, shouldn't change it, shouldn't change it for, uh, suspense, no, that's not suspense, that's, um, fees.
Now, the fees are good.
Ooh, and suspense, you kept it the same too, and that's me not typing it out. Okay, so I gotta change that, but, uh, and then airplane, there was a question the other day, where does airplane come from, and I, I made a guess, but.
How we started collecting it?
Yeah, well, why do we get it?
I guess it wa- it was before I started, so I guess the airport authority contacted the municipalities to say, basically, we don't really wanna do all this work ourselves, if you're willing to collect these permit fees, we'll let you keep the money. So, but, all right.
All towns do it in the state.
Yeah, it was just.
But you don't have to, like, I could call them up or send them an email today and say, you know what, I'm done, no more, you guys can do it. But, I'm paying this sixteen hundred dollars. Um, so that's how we ended up with it, is they just went to the municipalities to collect those fees and it takes work off of them and we get to keep the ninety dollar sticker fee. Um, but it looks like airplanes are declining at the airport. Like, one guy called me and said, I don't have an airplane there, well, you were on the list, I keep my boat trailer there, like, okay.
Did you say is it registered?
Yeah, I know.
And the other thing you might wanna tell them about is your collection agency.
Yeah.
So we started doing a collection agency this time last year, I think, which is like, I can't read that.
What?
Got it on my paper.
Well, and this is another laptop, so I ca- it won't, let me type in, cause it's tell them I need to sign in, and when I do, it rejects me.
So this suspense was huge last year, because we started with the collection agency.
And you can see twenty five thousand dollars.
Twenty five thousand, um, and, we're not gonna collect that again, that was just a big push for fifteen years worth of people not paying their taxes, and the ones that decided to pay, that's what we got out of them, so now I just use them, we used to use a marshal for all of our delinquent, um, motor vehicles and personal property, and then he had passed away and called a few more and nobody wants to take on our collections anymore, so we went with this collection agency, and they charge the exact same fees.
You know what the fees are, is it a percentage?
It's fifteen percent, and this collection agency actually is a little bit cheaper because the marshal had a thirty dollar minimum.
Oh, yeah.
Where the collection agency is fifteen percent, five bucks, it's fifteen percent on the five bucks. The better, but. And they've been doing well.
So the fact that you put the thumb on them last year, got people thinking that they ought to pay, so.
No, they still don't like to pay.
No, okay, I'm just curious.
I'll be sending a file in a couple of months, everybody will get a colored bill with a sticker on it, you're going to the collection agency if you don't pay by the end of the month, and you know, I'll be sending them for this year.
So when they go to a collection agency, can you charge them more?
Collection fees.
Only the collection, only their fee, so in my system, I add on the fifteen percent.
That's what I'm saying, so it's not really hurting the town at all, that, they pay the additional.
Their fee is added on.
That's right, I, I couldn't remember that, so, yeah, so, so they're paying more by not paying.
Correct.
And is there interest charged on overdue accounts, so?
Oh, yeah.
So they pay all of that, plus the.
I had someone come in and pay a bill for his son. I had someone come in and pay a bill for his son from two thousand twelve, it was five hundred and seventy-one dollars, and the original bill was like two hundred.
Yeah, we were at eighteen and a half percent, or eighteen? Which one?
Eighteen percent, uh, fifteen to the collection agency.
Okay.
Someone's better to pay on.
And, um, the, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
The, the majority of delinquency you're seeing is in motor vehicle, or is it just?
You only, it looks like a lot more motor vehicle, because there's more motor vehicles than anything else, but it, it's across the board.
Across, yeah.
So, you have a really low percentage, though, don't you, of delinquent taxes, what's your, what is the percentage?
What was last year, ninety-eight point nine nine?
That you collected?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how long do you let it go before you send them to collection?
So, the motor vehicles that were due in July, and then the ones due this January, they're going in two months.
Good.
Um, I don't like to let it go too long.
That a motor vehicle. Well, then they sell the vehicle, and there's all kinds of other.
Um, and same thing with personal property. Real estate's a whole other ballgame.
When it goes, do you know this generally, when it goes to a collection agency, does that impact people's credit scores?
Yeah.
Would assume so.
You don't have their social security numbers.
I honestly, I don't think this collection agency.
Do that?
It's more of a very stern, trying to collect it with their wording.
But you don't have people's social security numbers either, so.
No.
So, it really.
No.
More out of general.
It's more they just don't like that term, collection agency.
Yes, no, I. I wouldn't panic, I was like, ah.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
Any issues?
Yeah.
Is that the best way to do it, I guess, we figured.
Now, your equipment's functioning?
Well, no, I need to make a phone call, but other than. My validator doesn't wanna take its paper, but that's all right. Nothing that'll cost you anything.
Oh, okay. Good to hear. Anything else, ladies?
No.
No.
Not for me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. And, um, for the assessors, tab two, page one, and also, there is an item under capital, because that's where we show revow, so we'll do that as well.
Okay, yes.
And Loretta, sorry, this is, this is the beginning, so this is what they're looking at when you're talking to them, so. Oh, thank you. Got a little sidetracked there.
So, we know what your accomplishments have been this year, and we're looking for next year. And you wanna talk a little bit about what you're planning on doing, and? Any issues, you're not looking for any real increase in money outside of salary, typical salary increase?
All right, so then I'll just say it for one. No, we're, we're a pretty bare bones budget, we don't spend the last, um, I don't see any reason really to make any big increases.
Okay.
And basically, our big goal every year is to get out a grand list and hope that it's higher than the one before.
Yeah.
Which, if you're not aware, we got a nice little bonus or boost from, uh, Eversource this year, which is.
Yes, we did.
Relatively unexpected. You aware of that?
No.
A lot of new equipment, um, new conduits and piping, like twelve, twelve billion dollars worth. Which is a nice increase for our personal property list.
Wow, I think the whole grand list went up sixteen million, and twelve million of it was them.
Wow. Did you say billion with the, you said?
Million, I started with an M.
Million, because I'm like, what?
Oh, then our grand list would be.
I'm like, really low?
You're getting racist all over.
What, what, sure, go ahead.
A zero mil rate?
Is that an M or a B?
I gotta at least make it point one.
Right. Um, so, last, last time we talked about this, which was the circuit breaker program, is, do we have people participating in the circuit breaker program?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and where is that, is, I, I just don't see that reflected anywhere, so where would that be reflected in the budget?
It gets reflected, it's an adjustment to the taxes.
Okay.
So, it's, we don't have an expense line item or anything, Loretta takes the property value down accordingly, right, for the circuit breaker?
Okay.
Well, it's a, it's a, a amount right off the tax bill, it's a tax amount right off the bill.
Okay. And do you know how many people we have participating? It, it's okay?
I think we have about sixty or so.
Okay.
And it's, it's called a circuit breaker, what is it?
It's a, it's, um, a tax relief for elderly homeowners who don't exceed a certain income.
Okay.
Um, and then, do people need to apply for that program, and there's a timeframe in which they can apply?
They need to come in between February first and May fifteenth, they need to bring in their, if they file income tax, their income tax plus their social security. And if they don't file income tax, they bring in all their, you know, year-end things that they get from any income they have. And then, you figure out if they get a benefit or not.
Yeah.
And there's also a town program, a local option that they get.
Right, right.
And then, do we have any type of rental assistance program for seniors?
There's the renters rebate, that, it's a state program, and that uses the same income limits as the homeowners program.
Okay.
And they just get a check in the mail.
Oh, like a one-time check, once a year?
Yeah.
And is it the same, there's a timeframe for that as well to apply?
That is April first to October first.
Detail of all that is spelled out on Loretta's, um, website.
I, I think I've looked at it before, but some, I process things a lot. So, thank you, Loretta.
Okay.
Loretta bought, but, um, budgets a whopping revenue amount for copies of three hundred dollars.
Woo, guess we won't spend that all in one place. Or we will.
And if you go to capital, if you're done with operating, page one of capital and tab five. You're gonna see, in, within capital, items called non-capitalized, they're big items that we budget under capital, but they don't meet the definition, but it seems to be the best place to slot them. So, there's revow, which we reserve for every year, remember last week, I gave you the reserve list, so, as we do the budget, we analyze how much we're gonna need, depending on the revow, and set aside money.
And this is a partial revow next year, then?
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Carol, anything else?
No, nothing.
She was clean.
I'm gonna pass these down to you, each one for each of you from Tony.
Loretta, I think we're good.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not ready to go.
Oh, okay, well, we'll hang around.
You can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta.
Can I use the restroom before me?
Yes.
Thank you, before Tony.
Motion, take a five-minute break?
Sorry, can we take a short break before you go?
A second? You need my.
Second?
Sure.
Was it something you said? Yes, so, why not? Get a water? By the way, I contacted.
Guys, because, um, that's, without having the money coming from the state, we don't really know the value, so we can ask for the value.
From the state, yeah. Yeah, I'm just curious, so, when, when we're advocating at the state level to have a.
That was a big hit, when I think back. We look back here. Circuit breaker, yeah, there was sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year that we, we were, yeah, that we've lost.
Reversing, and you just do it.
Right.
OPM can reimburse up to a hundred percent, is how it's still written now, but they don't have any money, so they don't reimburse.
And we're supposed to get how much for pilot on all the state properties too, yeah.
No, yeah, no, that's like a, it's a travesty across, and our, our cities, they're fifty percent non-taxable.
Especially Hartford.
Hartford, six, yeah, I think Hartford is fifty-six percent, New Haven is sixty percent non-taxable, they're grand, like, you can't, yeah.
Yeah. Because they don't make any money at Yale, look at their endowment level.
They don't, right, exactly, I mean, it's hard, it's, and I think the only places where we're really funding pilot is where there's prisons, and that gets reimbursed at a hundred percent. Because it's, it's not even that we get reimbursed a full amount, we get like sixty-five percent for non-pro, I, there's a whole formula, but.
The one town that does do well with pilot is Mansfield, with Yukon.
Right, because they have.
But they're like over ten million, I think.
Yeah, but they're still consistently under, but, when you look at.
Oh, uh, yeah, and the cost to Mansfield, yeah.
Right, yeah. Um, right, and the services that the town of Mansfield's providing, and kind of police and fire, even though Yukon has a town.
Okay.
Sorry.
Tony's champing at the bit.
Not really.
No, this is interesting.
So, what, what do we, what do we, this is always the time when, hey, do I talk, do you talk, what, what is, what are you, what are you guys?
Well, I'm just gonna say, why don't you fill us in on what you're looking for, for the next year, and, uh, any, any major changes?
Uh, we're looking for, you've got, you've got, basically, a one percent, we're coming in at a one percent increase. Most of what we have in our budget remains very much the same, we did some salary adjustments this year that we hadn't done in the last year, possibly two years. That's it, that's what, that's what the one percent is. I assume that, up, up top, the, the money that you see in terms of revenue, the State Board of Education is grant money that comes in, uh, that we apply toward our, um, operational costs. East Hattam Board of Education provides an eight thousand dollar contribution to reimburse, to, to help support the drug and alcohol program that we have in high school and middle school. And then, the agency dedicates eight thousand dollars of the money that we get in fundraising, uh, to offset operational costs as well, so that's, that's those, other town, East Hattam, that's those three revenue pieces. And the other, I think, is, I don't think there's any, actually any change, the, the other thing, we're trying to keep things kind of pretty much steady where we are.
And Tony, if you look at what I gave you, I didn't give you an increase for some reason, so I'm gonna populate that one percent increase.
Yeah, it's, I, I have the numbers, do you need them?
No, I have the numbers too, it's just not reflected right here.
Okay.
So, I'll make that change.
Okay.
If you want the increase.
Huh?
If you want the increase.
That'd be a good thing. So, you know, it's pretty, to be honest, it's a pretty bare bones budget, we operate pretty close to the mark, um, every year.
So, her budget request should be two oh two.
Two oh two, six four.
Forty-two, yeah.
So, there's a whole bunch of stuff in here.
So, the.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, the Board of Finance has a policy where they like to see some of the financial, um. Statements is a strong word, but standing of, of, um, nonprofits we support, so Tony provides those information every year.
And the, and the, the document that you have on top is created by our, our agency, by our bookkeeper, and the reason for that document is that. What will show up on our financials is, like, all of the, all of the donations that come in under our five oh one C three are included as, as, they're included in aggregate number. And the Board of Finance looks at me and says, well, why are you telling me you have X amount of dollars in donations, when in fact, your tax, your tax, uh, your finance reports are saying you have this? That's the breakdown, we have donations to Project Graduation that come under our five oh one C three, same for Food Bank, those kinds of things, so that, that's a way of trying to explain what the, where those dollars actually go. One of the things that is always confusing to me, I don't know why it happens, but it's consistently done by the accounting offices, they include the United Way, five thousand dollar United Way. As a donation, in fact, it's a grant.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a donation.
Okay.
Um, so, we, if you look at the bottom, like, the, the gold little rectangle at the bottom, we, we broke, Sarah, the bookkeeper, broke that out herself. To show that donations are actually not twenty-five, the, the, the United Way, that United Way piece isn't, is a grant, and it, and it's a grant that's targeted, so it's, it's money in, money out.
And with Project Grad and the Food Bank, that means you're just like the fiduciary for, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they have their own bank accounts, they, 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 they just come under our five oh one C three.
Okay, that's a. And the DFC grant is?
That's the federal grant that funds the, the Local Prevention Council.
Okay.
So, it. We're the fiduciary for that as well, in that Youth and Family Services applied for the grant.
Yeah.
Eight years ago, um, but it doesn't fund youth and act, Youth and Family Services activities, it funds only the activities of the Coalition.
And is.
So, we oversee the Coalition.
Right, is John's salary part?
Yes, part of John's salary comes out of the Drug Free Communities Grant, and part of it, because he wears two hats at the agency. Part of it comes out of our budget.
Okay. Or, he's the prevention coordinator?
Prevention, we, we refer to him as the Youth and Prevention Coordinator, because he, he coordinates all the youth programs for the agency, as well as the prevention programs in the Coalition.
And what other things are funded out of that LPC, or that DFC grant?
Anything that, any of the mar, any, any of the.
The programs, the marketing, the.
Prevention programs, the marketing, the speakers that we might bring in that, that deal with the drug and alcohol.
Yes.
Anything that come, that is drug and alcohol related, pretty much comes out of that, right?
Sweet.
And then, the other kinds of things that we do, like speakers around mental health, or the internet safety thing we have coming up, that kind of stuff, comes out of our budget.
Okay.
Comes out of our donations as an agency.
Thanks, Sarah, for all this.
Very welcome.
Carol, any questions?
No, I don't. Not right now.
Think, I'm gonna say, think we can get anybody to go for a hike this year?
Yeah, it's frustrating, you know, we actually just started meeting with, in fact, you guys are gonna be hearing from us, trying, trying to get on, let everyone get on the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I pulled together a, a group of, you know, the Board of Ed is doing a wellness thing.
Yep.
The town is doing a wellness thing, we're doing a wellness thing, um, so we, we put everybody, and Park and Rec does a, a lot of Park and Rec stuff is round wellness, it's wellness-related.
Yeah.
So, I had them all in the office last week and said, let's do a town-wide initiative called Choose Wellness East Hattam.
Yep.
Uh, so, we've actually got a logo that we're, that we've been using, we're gonna change it from Youth and Family Services to East Hattam, approach you guys to have it sanctioned by the Board of Selectmen, this is a town-wide initiative. And we're, we're just gonna try to push, uh, to focus a lot of the activities under hashtag Choose Wellness East Hattam, you know, um, hikes being one of them.
In case, in case you wondered what I'm talking about, we had a four hikes set up last year.
Five.
Five, and, um, uh, outside of a scheduling error on my part, but I don't think it made any difference, because no one was there, I, from what I understood, because I checked, uh, af, after the. uh, aft- after the fact that I said, geez. I had it on my calendar at one and it was at ten, but, uh, um, cuz Tony's saying, why aren't you hiking?
I know, we're right in, okay, I know where you're supposed to be, why am I talking to you?
And I'm insisting that, I'm not supposed to be anywhere till one.
We're on a back of a bus right now.
So anyway, um, but unfortunately, we had actually not a single person show up at any of the hikes, but they were during the summer, which is our low, low hiking season, so.
But that, that's it.
Any of the five?
That's it, right, I'm sorry.
None of the five, you had anybody show up?
And, and, but that's, so we had, we did the Choose Wellness, can I complain for a minute?
Sure.
Do I have time? We, we have, we have a, we have a year under our belts of our, of the Choose Wellness campaign under, under Youth and Family Services.
Okay, that's it.
And one of the things we did was the five hikes. We also used money under the Choose Wellness Program to provide a two hundred and fifty dollar stipend to everyone, every one of our, um, gyms in town, and asked them to focus on a particular thing, cardio, massage, meditation, acupuncture, the whole concept being there are alternative ways to deal with pain, there are healthy ways to deal with nutrition, on and on and on. To, if, every, every gym. Two people showed up, total. Total, for the, for every gym.
Where was it marketed?
It was marketed through the newspaper, through flyers, flyers from us, flyers from the gyms, posters around town.
Yeah.
It went out in the events, in the events magazine, it went out on the, uh, calendar that goes off, it, every way, which way we know how. We go through the schools, through the, the electronic mailing, so it went out that way, it went out through our, our own constant contact mailing list.
Okay.
Okay, you did.
So I, I think one of the issues for, for the things, the things, the things that we do as a Youth and Family Services is a lot of folks who, you know, if you deal with Youth and Family Services, a lot of the time it's cuz your kid's in trouble. And it's just the reality.
Yeah.
Uh, and otherwise it's, oh, okay, yeah, somebody's doing this program and we don't know who it is, you know, but, but we're going on. I think we're equated a lot with the kid that's in trouble, you know?
Essentially, yeah.
This is the kid that's in trouble, this is the family that's in trouble, this is the kid that's doing drugs, that's not us, we don't need Youth and Family Services. So they, so they don't, they view programs in that way. So hopefully, if we get a townwide initiative around the Choose Wellness thing.
Right.
That is sanctioned by you guys, and that other groups are committed to, and, and buy into, in their own way, I mean, Lisa doesn't have to change anything that Park and Rec is doing, except hashtag Choose Wellness East Hattam.
Okay.
Right, so the name doesn't have to be there and there's no stigma attached, which is a stigma thing we need to work on, but.
So we'll talk about the relationship substance use and mental health, and she'll talk about the relationship to physical well-being, and the schools can talk about whatever they talk about. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll real, really be able to kinda move this thing forward, that's the goal, anyway, so I'm not complaining.
You may, you, well, it's not a complaint, I think, you know, that you have a point of view, that's probably valid, I mean, cuz I expected to be people there sometimes, I mean, the weather was a little iffy a couple times, but it wasn't doing anything bad, and I thought for sure we'd get somebody at the castle, not a soul showed up, and, and, um,
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, so, but it would be the season too, so.
Yeah, we, that would be.
I don't remember knowing about it.
It could be, but we did them at different times of the day, we did it different days of the week, some were family oriented, some were high school, uh, teen oriented, some for, for your, for your really robust, serious hiker.
And to dovetail on that a little, um, the town's insurer is Connecticut Care.
Mm-hmm.
And as part of our Connecticut Care, we have a wellness program, and we have ten thousand dollars a year
Yep.
Joe was there.
That combined for the Board of Education in town can be used for wellness, we have done biometrics training, testing, we've done a health fair, we've done yoga, we've done our pickleball, there has been disc golf, nutritionists, exercise programs, maintain, not gain this past, um, fall into the holidays. So we have a, and the schools are embracing it
Yep.
more than the town, I think we're a little more fragmented, but, um.
See if we can bring us together.
Right, but there's, there's, there's been a lot of enthusiasm for some programs we've brought in, cooking demonstrations, and is, healthy, healthy alternatives, so it's, it's, it, well, and we have a really great wellness committee for the, um, town Board of Education.
Yeah, well, we've got, uh, at our meeting, Joseph Burgeon was at our meeting, and Kathy Bristol was there, at, at our meeting.
Lisa and I are both on that. Yep. Right, yeah, he told us all about it at our meeting yesterday.
Oh, did he? Okay, all right, cool.
We had a wellness meeting yesterday.
Good, that's a good thing. So anyhow, so we're gonna, if we can get on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting to really kind of do what I just did, do it again.
This Wednesday, I mean, next, I mean, Tuesday.
I, I think, I think what they wanted to do was wanted a march, something, because they weren't, they weren't gonna be available this week. Cuz the whole group is gonna, hold this fight.
The first one or the second one?
I don't remember, I'll, I'll text you, I'll, I'll, you know, I don't, I don't remember, I had the thing back there.
Are you doing ECC or Rob and I?
No, you said, when I asked you, you said that you guys could discuss that, I didn't need to bring Lauren in.
Yeah, that's right. Right. I forgot.
But I figured I might as well follow it up from Youth and Family Services on the.
The next, yeah, the next page is our ECC.
ECC is Lauren, is she here?
No, no, we're, Rob and I met with her.
Oh, okay.
She's fabulous.
She is fabulous. She does a great job. So you don't, you, you don't need anything from me that regarding the march?
No.
No.
Are we done?
We're done.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. I got your, you know, play.
That was wonderful, I just was.
I'm gonna be away next week, so I, can I follow up with you?
Yeah.
When I get back the week after, then we'll go over to Nmeg and.
And figure out, yeah, what the plan is. Sounds great, thank you, Tony.
Thank you, folks.
One sixty-one. I forgot about that, Lana, sorry about that.
It goes like gags.
No, I, I'm.
Her very limited time, but she's.
Yeah, it's catching up with me.
I know.
She's hard to catch a hold of.
She's, well, yeah, do you, do you wanna do Youth and Family?
I don't care, I mean, what are.
I mean, early childhood?
Yeah. So. You got, well, you have the, I mean, you have the information here. The question, of course, was staffing levels, compensation for staffing.
In, 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 Early Childhood Council is a partnership with the town, the Board of Ed, and the United Way.
Okay, that was my, gonna be right.
They, and they were, um, starting on page one sixty-one.
Yeah, I got it, but does it, does it state that actually on this page somewhere?
Um, I don't know if it does that or not.
Okay, so what is, what is the?
So early child, they work with children birth to, to five in our community, they're based in the elementary school, and Lauren, who does it, also does East Hamptons. So she provides.
Okay.
Tweet it to us.
Okay. Um, and when we first started the Uni- United Great Way Grant was a little more robust, we started at, uh, six thousand from the town, six thousand from the Board of Ed, and then we increased it, and then, um, when Rob and I met with Lauren, you know, they, they, they were providing some scholarships to students to nursery schools and stuff, and they were finding they couldn't afford to do some of that, so, uh, an, an increase of, it's twenty percent, but of fifteen dollars would really equip them to do more.
Fifteen dollars for?
Fifteen hundred budget increase.
Oh, okay.
The town support would really give them the ability to do a whole lot more.
Okay.
It's a pretty small amount of money, actually.
And she's doing great stuff.
Twenty percent.
That has a significant, uh, impact, I think, to so many programs.
Yeah, that's okay.
If you look what they, they do, I mean, it's just amazing for the amount of money we're contributing to it, so.
And is she hourly, or what's, how, how is?
So she and the other gal are Board of Ed Education employees.
Okay, so we'll see that reflected in the Board of Education's budget?
It's just a line under salaries, that's it, yeah. And, um, one of the things is, is making sure that they're appropriately compensated, which is under the Board of Ed purview, but we've shared some of that information with, um, superintendent. But just making sure they're compensated appropriately, but they are Board of Education employees, and they're housed at the Board of Education, or at the elementary school.
So, was there a recognition on the, um, the Board of Ed regarding that, do you remember?
As far as the wages?
Yeah.
I, it's on, um, Brian and I have discussed it, and it's on my list for when we do, um, wage increases in the spring,
Okay.
to, to ensure that they're, they're addressed. I don't know what the amounts would be, that's the purview of the board, but they're, 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 it's on the radar to make sure that it's identified.
Because it was obvious that, I mean, when you have salary, people donating lots of service, uh, first of all, it's not appropriate, but it's also not legal, so.
Right, especially when you're interacting with children.
Right.
It makes it even more, and sustainability wise, of like, it's wonderful that we have people who are willing to do that, but if she moves and then, right, there'll just be an enormous drop off.
And they do, they do a great program, and, you know, sometimes people who are performing the most kinda go under the radar because they're just taking care of stuff and you're not worried about it, so
Yep, yeah.
it's a good thing to, to look at.
And, uh, there's nothing, I think, more important to address some of these issues, if, some of these early childhood issues, if, uh, before the kids get to school, they save money at that end. Uh, so, I mean, I just feel it's money well spent, and, uh, this was a, uh, addressing it would be really important, and being able to just, for this very modest sum, being able to, uh, improve, significantly improve the services seems to be a, a no-brainer. Any other questions on that?
No. Um, so it's funded, part, you said partially through United Way?
Right, right, United Way, and who else?
United Way, the Board of Ed, and the town.
And the town, okay.
The one that I'm concerned is that there may be a knock, reduction in United Way funding, future funding, so.
So that's, yeah, that's something we have to keep on our radar because in, in, in all honesty, the program costs is less than twenty-five thousand a year to operate.
Right, yeah.
And it's being split sort of three ways at this point.
Yeah.
So then is she coordinating with the preschool teacher at the elementary school, the preschool, pre-kindergarten?
She coordinates with the nursery schools in the town as well as adult, she's very, yeah, and she has it in her notes, and I know you just got it today. But she coordinates across the board for preschool.
Okay.
And just birth to five.
Right.
Libraries tab two, page one sixty-nine.
An hour ago, you wouldn't have been having those coats on.
Yeah, it was so hot in here.
Have to, uh, send out an SOS to you're starting to feel faint here, the sauna, so. Pretty soon the AC will have it, so we'll be putting coats on probably, but, uh. Look, see, you're cold already, right?
I'm freezing.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm at.
We're not complaining.
Should I send him an SOS?
I'll just go get my.
My beard, my mustache is turning white from frost.
Just go get our space heaters.
That's what I'm afraid of. Oh, dear me, okay.
Okay.
Should I send him a text, are you that cold, I'll send him to turn the AC off?
You need to kill him.
Pardon us while we do these external communications here.
Can it just be turned off, it doesn't have to be heat or cool?
What do you want?
We want copacetic.
Uh, yeah, yeah, exactly. No heat, no cool.
Saying we're growing icicles.
That's our biggest complaint about, really.
If I have two.
They cannot moderate the temperature in here.
It's the lack of plugs and the, and regulating the temperature.
Lack of plugs.
Ellets.
Yeah. Isn't there a code every six feet or some?
Actually, not for commercial.
Not for commercial?
I know. I mean, this room is adequate, but it's like where offices are, it's like, it's like, okay, where's he supposed to plug the vacuum, the vacuum, the plug, and we're no plug.
I'm sure it'll be addressed in a minute. Okay. Michael, come on up. I, I just feel like I have to shout it, you can bring a chair too, if you want. Have to get right in my face.
Stop, leave him alone, he's like, it's too hot, it's too cold, you're too far, you're too close, you're just like.
How long have you guys been doing this?
Rob, we got six more hours to go.
Oh, that's right, we do, okay. All right. Michael, tell us what you wanna do and what your future goals are and, uh, changes? Where you wanna spend our money, for the town's money?
Well, um, you know, I feel.
I know you have no problem doing that, so.
Well, for a good cause, though.
Absolutely.
The library service, uh, everyone in town ages birth to, to death, honestly, so anyone that needs reading materials, culture, education, you know, we're there to help, uh, technology assistance. Um, so we're just looking for some modest increases this year. Um, over the past couple of years, the cost of materials, uh, particularly books and, uh, and films has increased, so we've been spending a little bit more, so I'm asking for an increase on the, um, uh, books and periodicals line item to reflect that, so there's an increase there. I'm just looking at the regular budget right now.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. You're on the same page?
Yep.
Uh, Communications, um.
And Mike, this is, I'm sorry, this is what they're looking at too, so this can.
He's like super helpful.
So you're on the same page as them, I'm sorry, I meant to give that to you.
I think I got it mostly memorized, I studied for this test.
Literally, literally right.
Okay. Okay, um, so, oh, Communications, um, so that is the line where our programs come from, um, and we do educational programs for, again, all age groups, uh, kids, teens, adults. And that has been heavily requested in the past, unfortunately, these programs cost money, um, and we've done everything we can on a shoestring budget. Uh, but the fact is that the presenters and lecturers that people are requesting, particularly the adults, um, cost more than we're currently able to afford. So it's been heavily requested that we increase our programming, uh, especially for the adults, our children's librarians do a fantastic job with the shoestring they've got. So I'd ask for a fifteen hundred dollar increase in that line, which I think says like a hundred percent, um, for perspective, uh, most libraries of our size and in our area spend around six thousand dollars on programs. So asking for a three thousand dollar program budget still puts us at half of what like, uh, say Chester or East Hampton, uh, would be spending. Um, other than that, um, I do have an area of concern with the salaries, a lot of our employees make, um, right around minimum wage, so with the minimum wage increases, uh, we're gonna get, you know, mandatory state increase there, so just something to be aware of.
And that's what you have reflected in this?
Uh, I actually didn't touch that line, I don't.
I, I, I've reflected that.
You reflected it, okay.
Calculated it, yes.
So. That looks a little high, it's because that's why. Um, do you guys have any questions for me, or?
Um, stuff like Lion and Interstate Library, is that, do we pay for that, or?
That is under the shared services budget.
Okay.
Um, so the library has its own area there, um, anything technology wise would be under shared services, um, Lion, uh, also provides the library's tech support, uh, which reduces the burden on the town's shared services and IT department. Um, and they also provide us with, uh, really a state-of-the-art, um, um, library, a computer system. So for circulating books and connecting with other libraries, Lion is the most advanced in the state, and it's, uh, it's well-appreciated by our patrons who, um. as a small town, we don't have as many books as, say, Wallingford or Middletown, but because we're part of Lion, we can get books from those larger libraries and we usually get them within a week, so.
Yeah.
It's it's a very valuable resource.
Oh, I completely agree, I was just curious about, right, yeah.
Good thing. Uh, so that's where that's reflected.
Can we do revenue before we go to capital?
Yes.
Okay. You can see on the screen. The first line is endowments, the second line is fees and fines, and the third, the fourth rather, is gifts or donations.
You can see the revenue page.
You don't have, nobody does?
You didn't look up the.
It's a test.
Oh, you brought your own, use us.
Sorry.
So in a fifty six thousand, about forty of it is the Rathbun. Is it has the trust for East Haddam Free. I know they're at a different contribution percentage, but have they, is there an investment plan or do we have any idea what the dollar amount is going to be so we can plan appropriately?
They were planning, uh, to give an increase this year once the building's been turned over, although now that that's taking a little longer, I don't know if they had to pay an insurance bill or.
I think there was an insurance bill with every change.
Yeah, I mean, I, as far as I know, we're still planning on, based on the percentage, it would be somewhere around twenty, twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand, which would be a six or s- seven thousand dollar increase from a week in.
Okay.
Um, so that should be reflected in that, that revenue.
Now, is there an investment policy that's gonna state how much? Well, it's two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of the value of the endowment based on the agreement.
And then you, okay.
And so the, the endowment right now is worth a little over one point two million.
So the amount of fifty six thousand, we can slightly increase and I'll follow up on that for you guys at another meeting.
And I think something we had mentioned last week, and maybe it's in here, is that, like, in line with what libraries are doing across the nation, eliminating fines as a way to kind of.
Yes.
Get people.
Um, that's something the library board is looking at, we're hoping to institute it on July first. Um, contrary to what most people think, um, reducing fines or eliminating fines, not reducing, eliminating fines, actually increases revenue in most cases. Um, what you're seeing is that people are embarrassed to give you a dime or thirty cents or whatever the overdue fine is and they'll give you a dollar instead of. So right now our overdue fines are ten cents a day for books, so instead of those little tiny forty, fifty cent, um, overdos that we're collecting, we'll probably get a dollar or so each time, so that should hopefully increase it. Um, but it, you know, it varies from town to town, so right now it conservatively kept us at the, at the same, uh, seven thousand dollar estimate for that income, but it should be an increase.
And you're hoping to move towards that by July first?
July first is is the goal, uh, we're discussing it at our library board meeting tomorrow night as a matter of fact, so hopefully the policy will be set. Um, I don't think there's a reason why it won't be. Again, there's, you see only benefits, you see benefits from, there's less confrontation at the circulation desk, the staff is more comfortable, the patrons are more comfortable. And it reminds people that, hey, this is a free service we're providing and you're helping us when you give us this money, it's not, it's not a penalty, we're not mad at you, just, you know. Get your stuff on time and give us a dollar.
Yeah.
And if you can't make the donation generous.
Right.
Clean a window.
I do, for the the kids and the teens, I'll ask them to shell a book or two if they're, uh.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Go alphabetize that shelf, we'll call it even.
And then you reduced your donations by a thousand.
Yes, um, one of the friends groups is struggling and it's been difficult to get as much revenue from that group. Um, there was also, I think, a reallocation in the, uh, donation line, the gifts receipts donations, that's been moved to the trust income because the Friends of EHFPL merged with the East Haddam Free Public Library Reading Room Association, so it's the same amount, but it's just on a different line now, so.
Okay.
You'll see, I think, six thousand subtracted from the library receipts, gifts, donations lines, but, uh, ten thousand has been added to the endowment and trust income line. Thank you. To reflect the increase from the Reading Room Association and the contribution from the Friends of EHFPL, so, little shuffling. It's an increase, so it's a good thing. And a lot of the, uh, the increase here would be offsetting some of the increases I've asked for, um, on the library side of things, so that's another way to look at it too.
I thought the telephone. Uh, issue was interesting.
Right, we were hoping it would be a savings when we switched to, uh, to VoIP, but unfortunately for the the fax machine and the alarm, we had to keep Frontier, so instead of paying one bill to Frontier, we're paying one bill to Frontier and one bill to Comcast, so, uh, that's increased our operating expense there. Not by, you know, not by a ton, but.
Yeah. I'm, I asked all my questions.
I'm all set.
Capital is tab five, starting on page nineteen.
All right, um, so the library board's big request, uh, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one is a feasibility study for a new library facility. Um, as you probably know, the building across the street is about to hit its one hundredth birthday and the, uh, the building downtown isn't, uh, very far behind, so. All these buildings have done a great job over the past century, it's, you know, we're looking, we're looking ahead and in the time it's gonna take us to build a new building, we'll, we'll meet one eventually. So we start, we want to start as soon as possible with a feasibility study. Fortunately, I think that number for the feasibility study might be a bit low, it was, uh, the estimate was based off of handicap accessibility studies. Unfortunately, there's no hard estimate on what a feasibility study could cost, it could cost anywhere from, you know, ten to fifty thousand, which is not a very helpful range.
So what do you think then, how low do you think this number is?
Um, I think I would be more comfortable if we were to, say, double that number, just to be safe.
Double the number.
Why don't I look at, we've had some feasibility studies on the Board of Education side, maybe, let me just go look and see what some of them have done, yeah. And we can come up with a number.
Um, and a lot of that will depend on the, uh, the task force that the Board of Selectmen is looking from point, I think, is it a work group or, anyway.
Whatever we call it.
Whatever you call it. Outlook, library outlook.
Study group.
Study group, yeah. All right, um, and the other, uh, requests, uh, for the, the existing facilities for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The, uh, the boiler in EHFPL, we've been, uh, putting that off for a couple of years and every year we're like, well, next year it definitely has to be replaced, so once again, that number, um, is in there and you know, every time we don't replace the boiler at, uh, EHFPL or Rathbun, we, uh, we roll the dice. So if there's a catastrophic failure, we're gonna have to replace it whether we've planned for it or not, um, so that number is once again in there.
So let's talk about the boiler at.
Yes.
The Free Public Library, so. We already put twenty, we've got twenty-one and change in there for future, we put that aside already?
Yep.
Okay. So you're looking for a total, so we're looking for thirty-seven, thirty-eight hundred additional? What are you, what is?
I'm looking for fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-nine thousand additional.
Fifty-nine thousand additional?
Should be eighty thousand. It's, it's not cheap to replace a boiler, especially in a one hundred year old building, unfortunately.
And do you know how long this has been delayed? When did you start asking for this and how long it's been delayed?
Beginning of time, uh, it's been a while.
I I think since as long as I've, I've been here, uh, so about ten years.
So you were doing a capital request every?
In fairness, I don't know that it was always on the town's capital plan, I think it was probably added there around two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
So. And there were issues, the town didn't wasn't, uh, didn't own the building yet and, you know, I understand the prudence in not doing it, but.
And how long over its life expectancy is it now?
Um, I know Ron Turner has that number, but, um, significant, I think at least ten years over, so.
And to confirm, Michael, most of these numbers have been vetted through Ron Turner, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So one of the issues here is that it's not just the replacing of the furnace, but, uh, there's significant asbestos involved.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Like removal?
Yeah.
Well, how do you figure that?
So old, it probably has asbestos.
Asbestos on it, so this number is including then asbestos removal?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, that's why it's so high.
One of the reasons it's so high.
And you're feeling good with that number?
Uh, that's vetted by Ron Turner, who has experience in that.
With asbestos removal.
Wasn't covered in my library science degree, so.
Well, that degree is obviously deficient.
I learned that quickly, but. Nothing about plumbing either.
Toilet cleaning?
Learned that, learned that fast, me too.
Okay. So, uh, and this number here for the repaving of the driveway, parking lot, et cetera?
Yep, um, also vetted by 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 Ron and his department, um, and I believe we're not the, uh, the only buildings getting, uh, driveway repair next year, are we, Cindy? I think so.
Well, that means if we decide we're gonna fund it.
All these things in one year?
It's difficult, I know, I understand.
No, I, no, you're, you're correct, there's a number of other facilities where we're looking at the.
So I assume that that's, yeah.
I don't know, they're next year, but that's something the capital improvement committee will be looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
As we can lump a few pieces across the town, it's helpful.
Yeah, I know there's definitely some cracks and holes in, uh, in both parking lots, uh, that could be patched, but I don't, yeah.
I think your paving has already been put off a couple of years, hasn't it?
Um, at least one or two, yeah.
Um, can you explain your relationship with the preschool next door, is don't, are they gonna use your parking lot or?
Um, there, there's been no agreement in place.
Okay, I'm just, I, I don't know.
Parents do park in that parking lot to drop the kids off in the morning and, um, you know, pick them up in the afternoon, but it's, it's usually not for a long period of time. Uh, right now the parking lot, because they're moving from the current preschool location to the church on the other side of the library. And their parking lot right now at the current location isn't any bigger than the four or five spots they've got in front of their new building, so it's, it's not gonna change that dynamic.
Okay.
Uh, the teachers are expected to park in front of the preschool, so there won't be anybody just taking up space.
Okay.
It seems like the dynamic is that they're gonna park instead of on the right, now it'll be parked on the left.
That wild change, didn't you, Adam, who does?
People are talking.
Anything else on the?
Um, EHF.
Buddhist library? Okay. How about you?
No.
Okay, all right.
That's it for now.
Let's go down to Rathbun.
All right, so I should, uh, caution that the Rathbun numbers are all in one year now because they've been put off a couple of years and this is where they've landed, so I'm not, um, I'm not fully expecting a two hundred thousand dollar capital repair budget for the Rathbun, that's just after putting them off for a year, that they've all ended up in one column.
Do you know how many years it's been put off?
Um, we've been putting things off, uh, I wanna say since two thousand thirteen.
I can, I can get you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
It, it has. Um, the HVAC upgrade is mostly for air conditioning at this point, as the boiler's already been set aside and, uh, partially funded from the Rathbun Trust. Uh, and that was in this year's budget, so we don't have to worry about that for next year. The windows insulation at the Rathbun, if you ever go into the building and look at where we have the giant air conditioners in the windows, you'll see that we have actually insulation and bubble wrap stuffed into the gap between the windows and the, uh, you have the two window panes, so the windows are gonna need repairing at some point and setting aside a little bit of money every year will help with that because historic windows fortunately are not cheap. And that is a historic district, so we have to be in compliance with that.
So you're looking for a thirty-five thousand dollar. Are you looking to do some windows every year, is that the goal, or you wanna try and do it as a lump sum down the road?
Um, I think we're saving up for a lump sum down the road, but again, that's, that's more Ron's department, so.
I just wonder if there's.
I defer his expertise on that.
All right, 'cause there's, well, that expertise will be gone momentarily, but, uh, but the issue I'm looking at is, is are there some windows that are really desperately in need of replacement?
Yes, there are two that are desperately in need of replacement, um, uh, the, the ones holding the giant air conditioners because the, uh, the windows weren't built for that. In short, so we have sort of an issue where the HVAC upgrade should probably be done before we replace those windows, because you don't wanna put in two brand new antique replica windows and then put those giant air conditioning units right back in to start damaging them again. So the, you know.
Right, so if you up upgraded the HVAC system, then you wouldn't need the window units, yeah.
And these things are the size of small refrigerators, so. So I, you know, I just think some consideration should be given for that.
Right.
Um, and once again, you've got.
So this AC upgrade then isn't going to happen until the boiler, whatever the.
Oh, the boiler's budgeted for for Rathbun for this year?
Um, so the AC.
Right, so this is just the AC.
Yeah.
And that would be potentially next year, or next fiscal year.
Right.
Right. And it could be potentially split up like the windows are and planned for down the road, so.
Well, I'm just saying, looking at it, just thinking that, you know, replacing the windows would probably save considerable on the heating.
Yes.
Because it's not, there is not just, we're not heating the outdoors.
Right, there's a breeze in that building all year round.
I mean, you say the HVAC update is partially funded by the Rathbun Trust, how does?
I'm sorry, the boiler upgrade.
The boiler upgrade, okay.
Uh, this fiscal year, this present fiscal.
The trust has a certain amount they pay out in a, for the lack of a better word, a ceiling of which they can be at, so they had an additional distribution that had to be used solely for the Rathbun.
Yep.
And we have a, a Board of Finance policy that says one-time revenue can only be used for one-time expenditures, so it was allocated for Rathbun capital.
Okay. And that was for, uh, the oil burner upgrade?
Towards the oil burner upgrade, right.
And so the town contributed?
The rest.
The rest.
Yeah, the Rathbun donation was eighteen thousand something.
So, okay, so you have some parking lot repairs here, paving, and then you're looking for another twelve thousand for painting next, or the following year, correct?
Uh, correct. Um, however, that could probably be delayed. We've had a couple of projects over the years at the Rathbun, so when we first put that in, that it was like ten years down the line, so that's just the years to come up in. And the projects we've had, we've had painting done in the meantime, so it's only really touch-ups in the main room.
So you actually have quite a few projects going on, or?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yeah, always it seems.
And the money that was allocated last year for these capital improvements, you expect to expend all of it for?
Um, again, that's in coordination with the facilities department, but I guess.
Yeah, I have a list, 'cause Ron and I met on it on Monday.
Yeah.
And the list is on my desk of what he said is done and what he says to keep in place.
Don't have any other questions?
Charlie?
No.
Is there twenty-one?
There's one.
Yeah.
The next page is. No, sorry, the follow.
Two pages. So you want shelves to put books on?
We do, um. Uh, however, I will say that depending on what that, uh, that feasibility study finds, and if there's a timeframe put in place for a future facility, that could probably be delayed.
Okay.
Depending on what that timeframe is, um, we're gonna need shelves in the next ten years down there because they'll deteriorate, uh, this is mostly for the. Uh, this is mostly for the children's area. Um, the adult area has the original antique shelves which were built to last, so those are okay. It's just the children's area shelves are, are made of metal and plastic and they're, they're starting to get a little warm and being swabbed late, so.
And this, the ones that we've been carrying forward for EHFPL, you were looking at potentially purchasing them?
Uh, correct.
But they could move if we move.
Yeah.
If there's a new facility.
We've been future-proofing, uh, any equipment purchases.
Okay.
And we would do that as well with the Rathbun shelves, depending on what the timeframe would be for them.
Now, has any part of this been part of your education?
The shelves are actually, the shelves, yes.
So in answer to your, your question earlier, we are gonna be looking to put together a committee and I'll be getting in touch with you.
Okay. Yeah, anything I could do to assess, just let me know.
And I texted Ron on the study committee and the elementary school study was done for under ten thousand. But this.
That was the envelope?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I indicated he, that we could discuss it more tomorrow, because it's a little different study, but to just maybe come up with a, a good number.
So what do you have for that number?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
That, that may be fine then.
And it was based off of the, what we paid for the handicap access lifts, on those same two buildings, so.
Michael, wasn't, isn't there talk, or wasn't there talk of an ADA compliant elevator?
There is an ADA compliant lift at, well, there is a handicap access lift at the Rathbun Library. Um, unfortunately, the first floor of the Rathbun itself is an ADA compliant, so while you can get in, you can't necessarily access everything on the main floor. And you certainly can't access, uh, the children's department, which was, uh, we've had a couple, yeah. It's had some unfortunate incidents with that, where, you know, a handicapped child wanted to come in and see Bubble Mania, and we had to turn them away, which is the big reason I want ADA compliant, uh, library facilities, cuz I never wanna do that again.
Right.
Um, we did two studies for ADA compliance and what we, uh, what we found was that you would have to lose so much space in the libraries to make them ADA compliant, that they would really no longer be functional. We're already very tight and limited in our space, so to add the elevators and the bathrooms, and then you actually have to reduce the size of all the shelves. So right now, our shelves go, it's like, you know, a little bit taller than I am. They have to be, you know, chest height, so if you're in a wheelchair, you can access them. So, it's just not feasible to turn our current facilities into ADA compliant facilities. Um, and even though Rathbun does have that lift, it's not an ADA compliant building.
And it is, the lift is functioning at this, at this moment.
Yes, yes, and we've made good use of it in the, in the last two weeks, so thank you for that.
You've had a number of people that were requesting it and, uh, it was a, all these, uh, elevators and lifts are proprietary and, uh, Otis, who has the one at, um, Rathbun, wanted just an outrageous amount of money to establish a contract, et cetera. And, uh, I still think they get, is it six hundred or eight hundred dollars an hour to come down and work on?
Something like eight hundred dollars an hour in that, which travel time from New Jersey. So what had happened was a, um, a repair tech from New Jersey came down by himself, um, looked at the elevator, flipped the switch a couple times, determined it was broken, and then drove back to New Jersey and sent us an invoice for that minute, literally one minute that he spent at the library. Uh, so Ron and his department were fighting that, and I'm sure the finance department was too, was.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So a lot of those things, it was several thousand dollars they wanted just to come back and repair the.
Right.
If, I mean.
The switch.
Just the switch, not on top of the contract we have with them already.
Yeah, so, so it was very, uh, so it took us five months, four, six months?
Almost six months, yeah.
To, uh, get around all that and get it repaired, so.
Uh, which it is, and it's functioning wonderfully, so, yes. Oh, sorry. That was my fault.
Yes, it was. Anything else more?
No.
But nothing in the free public library, the Mudus?
Nothing, um, no, the stairs in the back are especially precarious if you've got mobility issues.
Absolutely.
Most people that have any kind of mobility try to come in the front entrance, and we have a little pull-in area where it makes it easier, uh, to, you know, to park like in the front of the building and walk up, but it's still nothing ADA compliant, um. I've been known to drop books off at patrons' houses if they really can't get in or run them outside. Uh, you know, we try to make every, um, adjustment that we can, but there's only so much we can do.
Thank you, Michael, for that.
Thank you. And, and thank you all for coming, yes.
Yeah, you have a posse with you.
A lot of library supporters, yeah.
This is an impressive posse.
It's nice, yeah.
You're winning so far, just.
Yeah, right.
You've got enough for a bachelor.
Absolutely.
More people, the more money, right?
No, actually it goes the other way, but we don't wanna tell you that. We feel pressured then, so.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Awesome, thank you all.
The next time you come in, um, you and I can look at that list.
Okay, great, yeah.
I'm gonna take a five-minute break.
Can you take a five-minute break here, you wanna go look real quick now?
Uh, yeah.
Conservation, three thirty, right, we're like, right on, aren't we?
We catch up when we like.
The hot seat, isn't it?
You, you can back up a little bit, I mean, the mic will jump right in my face.
Page seventy-three.
We'd like to keep you a little bit off balance. We probably should for this. Should be a tip, yeah. By the time we're done, we'll have it down pat.
Usually that's the way it works.
So, um, could you just give us a brief overview of what your future goals are, and then we'll look at your budget?
Well, uh, future goals are to complete the, our number one goal really is to complete the ADA path at the Patrell, Patrell Reserve. Which is part of Chapel Farm Reserve.
I do, I wonder if it's your, something on your phone, sorry, we just, there's like a very quiet person talking. It's literally like there's a little woman whispering in our ear, and I'm just like, sorry Marilyn.
That's okay.
Last break, the same thing happened, and I don't know if it's this or not.
Maybe it's just feedback of some sort.
Don't see any little women in your ear.
It's not my phone.
Okay, sorry.
We're okay now, sorry Marilyn.
I don't know if we're okay, but you can continue.
Completing, clearing, and blazing the trails at Chigrew and Roaring Brook. We wanna also have a trail map and a brochure, as we usually do for all of our trails. Uh, we want to complete management plans for all of our properties, which we currently don't have at all, um, which is required as a conservation commission. We're working on a, um, an Eagle Scout project with a, a scout, a local scout. Well, actually, he's from Madison, strangely enough, but he lives in East Town. Uh, we wanna finish doing that. It's a, it's a project that will involve, um, the town being able to participate and potentially get some kind of a, uh, a patch or something, if they complete, uh, go into different trails. Uh, we wanna hold a couple of stewardship Saturday events. We're also looking, it's not on here, but we are, we're also looking to, uh, to do some sort of a, um, demonstration of gardening, uh, uh.
Pollinator gardens?
Yes, sir, carl, pollinator gardens, thank you for your help. Pollinator gardens in conjunction with the Agriculture Commission, which I know you're a part of, Carly, so I need to talk to you about that. We also wanna identify any town-owned open space properties that haven't been surveyed, because we're finding that there could be some contention with some, uh, adjacent landowners who believe that the property line is different than what the survey map, our, our, our maps might say, or the boundary markers might say. Uh, so we think that's pretty important. But that's basically the gist of what we have. We're a pretty small commission, um, we have a lot of responsibility, we depend on volunteers. We don't get a lot of volunteers on our stewardship activities. Uh, we're hoping to increase activity in the town, getting them more engaged. That's why we're looking to, instead of just clearing trails, we're looking to doing more activities, maybe around gardening, um, and other types of activities outside, so we can bring in more people.
And that's also the function of the stewardship Saturday events, to bring more volunteers on, hopefully?
Hopefully, but we don't, we haven't been super successful there either, but we still try. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, we've only begun.
I know. So I, I meant on that particular topic.
So the Eagle Scout project, uh, cuz it started when I was there, is kind of an, uh, interesting thing where in conjunction with the land trust, as it says, properties, the Eagle Scout is going to be putting in, um.
Adirondack.
Yeah, the pseudo, I don't remember what they call this, it looks like wood, but they're plastic.
Adirondack chairs, he's gonna be putting in adirondack chairs, there are actually two that are connected.
With a table.
With a table in the middle. And, um, they'll be, they'll have a symbol on them and, uh, if people complete going to the trails and sitting in the adirondack chairs, which hopefully will have a view or some sort of activity that you can perform at the end. A nice activity, that sounds a little weird, but.
An appropriate activity.
An appropriate activity, um, they'll be able to get, um, some sort of, like I said, some kind of a reward or something. Well, it might be a patch, we haven't really decided what that will be. But in conjunction with the land trust, um, they're doing some of their trails and some of the town trails, so it'll be a, a joint activity. It's, it's very different for us, cuz we've done, um, Eagle Scout projects before, but this is a totally new concept and it's kind of exciting, yes.
Seems like it, so he's not building the adirondack chairs?
Well, he gets them in a kit, um, and he puts them together. He's not actually sawing wood or anything, but he'll get them in a kit. And he actually found, uh, a site that had them really inexpensively, so, um, it, it, he was really lucky, cuz we were concerned about the price. And one of them's gonna be at, uh, what is it, Salmon, where the old dump site, ye olde dump site.
Salmon River Overlook.
Salmon River Overlook.
Ye olde dump site.
It's gonna be on a platform, so, um, Rob is still, um, looking on getting the platform, uh, parameters.
Maybe there's something else for me to do.
Laid out for him, cuz he's gonna have to build the platform for that particular site.
Okay.
So, um, money.
Well, they're just the transfer to forestry management conservation SRF fund. What does that mean? I don't know what that means, sorry.
So, what that means is, and we did a lot of this last year, we were budgeting in capital for both conservation and park and rec to do maintenance, and it really wasn't capital.
Right, yeah.
But it was in a non-lapsing fund, so the whole goal was to put it somewhere that once it was appropriated, the both commissions could use the funds. So, this is money that's used for, I remember Rob and I went through in detail last budget season. It's just, what is it, gravel, stone, uh, signs, any miscellaneous.
Bridge materials, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's just, it gives them a, um, funding source to, to address what's needed.
Okay, and so that's another, but that's not in our general fund, that's in another small little separate.
So it's transferred over, yeah.
It's like a non-lapsing fund, so, so, yeah.
And we, we hope to use that for survey class, for the boundary surveys. At least for a couple of properties, hopefully.
If, if I might clarify for people?
Yes, of course.
Uh, the, uh, many of our properties were acquired a very long time ago, uh, but the boundaries were either inadequately marked or not marked at all. And for us to recover the bounds, even though we have maps, sometimes it's relatively easy, but sometimes you actually need a surveyor again to find the corners and pins and everything. So, uh, it's a lot less expensive because they're not doing actual surveying, they're just finding the, 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 the boundary, so to speak. But, uh, it's a requirement, and we can't really do much in trail work or anything on any of these properties, because we don't specifically know where the boundaries are. So, what we usually do is, the stewards do is go as far as they can, find the boundaries and pins and locations, et cetera, that they can. And, and, you know, sometimes it's obvious, the stone walls, but sometimes it's, you know, a thousand, two thousand foot line, you know, line through the woods and, and, uh, sometimes there's only pins at each end. Nowadays, we ask them to put a pin every two hundred feet or so, so that we can easily retrieve them. But, um, it's just a way for us to better, again, goes back to the management that Marilyn was talking about, the properties, because of the, uh, that part of it, so it's hard to manage a property if you don't know where it is.
And people are very sensitive, if they see you walking along the boundary and they think you're actually on their property, they get pretty upset. So, it's important that we're able to establish what the real boundary is.
Do you have vacancies on the conservation commission right now? Do you have vacancies on the conservation commission right now?
We do, and I think one vacancy.
One alternate.
One alternate? And is that a U D R seat, do you know which?
I think it's really any, cuz I think we have a pretty good balance right now. It's probably an R if anything, if anything, it would be an R, but, or a U.
So those people you know.
I'm thinking about it, I'm crying.
I know. So there's an increase, as everyone sees in the last thing, but, uh, typically, the money gets used, uh, considerable amount of the money gets used in the spring, um, so, um. It looks like we've used seventeen thousand one hundred dollars, but I don't think that's the case.
It's because it's a transfer.
Yeah.
It's, it's purely a transfer to another fund. And I will be able to, at one of your meetings, provide you with all the special revenue funds. And I wanna correct something I said to recreation, because recreation programming, the town doesn't fund, but there is a line that comes over for them to have the same type of supplies, materials. So, yeah, we can give you, um, summaries on, on the special revenue funds.
So, for example, right now, the seventeen thousand one hundred, uh, there's, um, monies that will be used to establish the parking lot at Chigrew, over on the road.
Yeah, so, when we have a, a big property with, we think is gonna be a popular trail, we do need to establish parking lots. Sometimes we only need a distant, a little small area, cuz we don't expect a lot of people to walk the trail. But if we think it's gonna be popular, we really need to have a decent parking lot, and that involves a lot of labor and gravel and so forth.
And public works to be doing the workforce. And the base part of that seventeen thousand that we will not be spending is used for forestry. That was money that came into that fund from the sale of the timber at Nichols. And, uh, and that money is basically used as a, a seed money to cover for another, if we, right now, there's no reason for anyone to want any wood. On the properties may have died, you know, we'll have to do another informal survey, but, uh, but it's used to hire a forester and a forester to manage this log sale, if we ever have one again.
Okay, and even though they're in the same fund, they are segregated, so that they can't be used for, um, purposes not designated.
Sounds good.
Did you have any questions about my line items?
No.
No?
Your community events?
Community events was, um, we increased it, uh, due to the grand opening of the ADA trail, uh, Patrell that we hope to have, we wanna be able to have a nice, uh, celebration for that. We've had, we've had a couple of people that are handicapped that have been asking about the progress there, so we anticipate that when we do have a grand opening, that it will be well-attended, so we expect to have some expense there. With our stewardship Saturday, we usually provide free lunch, um, to people, it's usually a small group, but we do provide free lunch as an enticement to get people there, it doesn't always work as well as we hope, but. And when we do the something, uh, something at the community gardens, we might be able to provide them some takeaway gift or something. Um, and so we ex, we are anticipating some expense around those. And that's the reason why I increased that. And I also increased the conference as well, because I, there's a learning program for the people on the, on the commission, uh, who haven't done some of this stuff before. So they need some training.
And a lot of this involves, or many, many people want to go to the CLCC conference, which is Connecticut Land Conservation Council, so.
Which is coming up next month, so it's.
Is that the one at Wesleyan?
Yes.
Yes, it's an odd day event, yeah. And I reduced printing and binding, because we're finding very, that our maps are, we don't need as many printed maps. A lot of people are using online, we have a QR. We have a QR code at each of the sites that people use, that they can get the map online or on their phones or they can actually download it from the website, from the town's website.
Awesome.
So that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And you may not know, but Marilyn does the GPSing for all the maps and develops the maps and developed the QR code for all the properties, so.
That's amazing, thank you Marilyn.
It's all the Land Trust.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No other question.
That?
No.
Woo, was easy.
We made it through your first budget.
I know.
Well, part of it, stage one.
Stage, step one, yeah.
There's multiple stages and they get harder.
Well, then we go back and start.
Do I have to bring cupcakes next to me?
I was gonna say, where was your vice?
Cupcakes would be good.
All right, thank you.
Now you're gonna remember now, now that?
I have some actually, I mean.
Is that your water Marilyn? Your water.
Yeah, good job, thank you.
Thank you. What do you bring the seniors tomorrow?
Red velvet cupcakes with cream cheese frosting.
Okay, I'll see you.
Okay.
You want to do?
We got ten minutes. What do you want to do?
Want to do Ed?
Sure.
Are you ready, Ed?
His budget is really tough.
Suppose no change, extra.
Okay, don't get up.
That's really funny.
What page do you want, any idea?
It's like this, it's like this.
He starts on page sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
He could go up a hundred percent and it'd be nothing.
I have a hard time with my budget every year because all of our work happens after these meetings finish.
Yeah.
I have, I never have any idea how many people are going to appeal. I do have a general idea that on a year of a revow, we probably will have a lot of appeals.
Yeah.
Although the last revow, because property values had declined, people looked at their assessment and went, oh, it went down, so my taxes are going down. They don't understand the correlation to the budget and the grant list.
And I've tried to, you know, explain to people that just because it went down doesn't mean that your taxes aren't going up, so.
Quote a favorite, former favorite Florida Finance Chair when they, in another town, this lady was complaining, he goes, listen, I'm coming to get the same amount of money out of you. I don't care what the mill rate is because it's just a formula.
That's right.
Doesn't matter.
I do know that we have another, about eight days for people to appeal, they have until the twentieth of February. I have six thus far.
Okay, six.
I was gonna say, I directed someone to the assessment office today, so.
And.
Are they all from Banner?
A good, four of them are Banner, I guess. I believe, I've heard from a lot of the Banner people, from one of the Banner people that we're gonna get a lot of the Banner properties, so I'm anticipating ten or twelve Banner properties to them.
By the end of, when did you say it closes?
Until February twentieth, so we have their application postmarked. Most of our responsibilities are statutory, we're obligated to hear from a taxpayer that feels that they've been over-assessed, give us documentation or proof that is why they've been over-assessed. In many cases, we will actually go out and inspect a property. There are a lot of people that don't want the revow firm to come in their property when they do onsite visit, it used to be coded on a field card if they allow the tax, the assessor to come into their property or not. Then certain assumptions are made, you know, who built the house, the geographic location of the house, and sales in that general area.
So builder actually has a consideration in that whole thing?
Yeah, you know, when you get out on Chittenden Lane.
Yes.
There was an architect, it wasn't really the builder, it was the architect. Those are upper-scale homes with a lot of specialty features, different crown moldings and upscale items in the property. Floor tiles or granite countertops, extra facilities in the bathroom, all of that kind of stuff adds to the value of the house.
A bidet isn't just a bidet, it's expensive.
If it's pink, it's more expensive.
Even the extra sink in the master bathroom, lots of times two sinks, and you get charged for extra sink. Laundry sink in the basement next to the washer dryer, you get charged for a laundry sink.
Well, when they bought it, they paid extra money for all of that, so. Yeah.
Well, they don't understand the process, so when they, especially if they don't let them in, you know, things have changed. I mean, just an example, years ago it was corrected, but they kept saying I had a fireplace in my house and I have a stove enclosure which looks like a fireplace, but it's not a fireplace because it only has a thimble in it for a stove, so, but I had to bring them in and show them that there's no damper. So, and they said, oh, you don't have a fireplace. Yes, that's true, which is what I've been saying, so, and I missed it the first time, so.
So a good portion of our budget is compensation that the board members get, we're paid sixteen dollars an hour. We never know how long it's gonna take us, have to do onsite visits. Before Banner applications, we're gonna be on Banner, so that would take us less time, but. This part of town, that part of town, that part of town, takes us longer.
So I have one question which has nothing to do with Banner, but maybe have a similar thing. If you have a hoarder, has anyone ever come to you to have their?
Yes.
Assessment reduced because they are living next to a hoarder?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
And the town hasn't been able, or has done two of those?
My tenure on the board, we've had two of those cases.
So this is property plus auto?
And personal property.
Personal property.
I have nothing else.
Yeah, same.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For doing this for as long as you have been.
Next year's a revow, you're right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you wouldn't see that.
Till twenty-two.
But, no, but next year we'll have to budget accordingly.
Correct.
Okay.
Wow.
Good, all right, we're gonna have a full Saturday.
Can't wait.
We had a tough EDC on Saturday.
Starting at?
Nine.
Nine.
Are we adjourning?
We are adjourning.
Nine, okay, got it.
Make it on.
I'll second that.
You don't need.
Oh, sorry.
You two made the motion?
Technically, you don't even need one.
Oh, technically, no.
Did we?